So I'd like to call this meeting to order. All right, so the first order of business, continuing businesses, the budget update. So where do we stand on that? I feel like the last time we met.
So in front of you, Earl and I just about finished the budget presentation. So this is what we currently have, and we wanted to go through it with you guys. So please mark up, state anything that you would like to see changed. So if you want to quickly go through it page by page. The first page starts with the mission and vision of our schools. Then our objectives. So we've talked about class sizes, maintaining current quality of general and special education, continuously grow and improve educational offerings, mentioning the necessary repairs and services needed in meeting the social and emotional needs of our students. Stop me as I go. And then we go into how did we build the budget this year? The first step we did was build a level service budget. We began with the current year's budget, adjusted accordingly to the estimated year-end spending. Then we added new expenditures and savings for the next fiscal year. Emphasizing that our school has very little discretionary funding. We have mainly contractual salaries and benefits. Our special education, we're obligated with tuition and transportation. In operation and maintenance, we have our service contracts, utilities, supplies, and equipment. Then mentioning how our revenues can fluctuate, especially with the Department of Ed are revolving from our grants.
Can we, Nancy, I know you have it in this one too. Can we on that special ed tuition and transportation, put a dollar amount right there?
Yes, but wait for two pages.
Sure thing.
And then if you still want it, let me know. I'll explain why in a sec.
Okay, thank you.
So then the next, we talk about adding in the above-level service and then the capital needs. We have building repairs, updates, and IT support needs that need to be updated or haven't been addressed. And then I said, as you were seeing in our presentation, these needs impact the safety, well-being of our students, faculty, staff, and entire community. This is where you'll see the special. So then I go over the challenges. So the challenge we have encountered are the special education out-of-district tuitions. So we've had a 71% projected increase for fiscal year '24. This is 907,000 of increases in out-of-district tuitions only.
Wait, so can I ask real quick? So how many kids, so that's 71% projected increase for fiscal year '24. That's attributable to how many kids that are now going out of, what do we have, like a couple of extra kids going out of district?
Yeah, I have it broken out. We can definitely add that in. I think it's, I think it's six, but I'll double check it as we go.
Additional students from last year plus increase in those costs in general.
Definitely increase in the cost. That's, I get that because we talked about that now.
Students, yep.
Right, and we need to explain, I think that's a huge point.
I think having the number of additional students in there would paint a good picture.
Sure.
Yes.
I just think having the number of students.
Total, right. I would say in fiscal year '23, we only had this many, and now we have this many. But also the point that you had brought up about.
Here's my.
You don't want to call kids out.
Yeah, I get nervous.
Not by name, or grade, or even school.
I know, but we have.
Because a million dollars to pay to send kids out.
So if you have an increase of 500,000 and it's from a small town, people, I don't know, just.
I see your point.
I just want to protect, do you know what I'm saying?
I mean, I know one of them, so I get what you're saying.
So maybe not the increase in kids, but just the total number of students that represents, because it is a small number, but a huge amount of budget.
That's fine.
That's going to paint a picture to people like, listen, we're not making these rules. We don't make these rules. We don't make the decision on whether they can stay or go.
Right.
It's out of our hands.
I mean, we need to emphasize this. This is a, this is a big one. This is ridiculous.
And it's also the severity of the situation where like a child can't, is, needs such high needs that their needs are, you know, like we had so many questions at the Berlin FinCon meeting. They're like, well, you know, like, how would this happen? Like what, why can't you just hire a nurse to be in the school? And it was like, no, like equipment, like schooling, you don't understand it's such high needs.
A little bit. There's some things we can do if we get the additional positions we're asking for. It won't take care of all of this, but it's possible. It would be less if we got some other things.
Right.
And it's a year-over-year basis.
By the way, she's going to join us at the meeting tonight with the FinCon.
But I think if people understand.
I can't believe that's on Zoom.
People have to understand the number, yeah, they're trying to make that permanent, actually. They have to understand the number of, the percent of the population, or maybe just the percent number of the student population or something.
Sure.
If you don't want to, you know, if you can't identify.
Yes.
You know, like, it's, what is it? It's probably only like two or three percent, right?
Yeah, well, Janelle said one to two percent. When she presented wherever we were, she said it was like one to two percent, and that's average.
One to two percent of the population, it's a seven percent increase in the budget.
One percent, 71%.
The whole special education budget combined with the tuition and everything else is 1.2 million increase. Just that alone for special ed.
Wow.
Yeah.
And we're asking for like a two-point-something increase, so that's half of our increase.
Yeah.
Uh huh, yep.
And so.
Maybe I should add that, which is blank, blank percent of our increase.
In the other point, I think people don't understand.
You did that. It's seven percent of our overall.
Okay.
Nancy, you had got that, girl. This is seven percent of our overall 15% budget increase. But 1.2 million is half of the increase that we're asking for, right? Aren't we asking for an additional two, if you look at the number, you're asking for an additional 2.7, right?
Right.
1.2 is closer to 40% of that 2.7.
Yeah.
And, and the other point I would make is, you know, and I'm like explaining this to my husband, so this is why I'm, this is not like, we feel like doing this. This is state mandated. We have to do that.
If we don't pay this, what happens? So what? Who cares? What happens?
We have to apply for DESI emergency funding. That's what FinCon told us.
So what? Let's do that. So what? Who cares?
You want to apply for DESI emergency funding? That's going to pop your, that's going to top your town right back to the.
So what? Tell me what's going to happen.
Prices.
So who cares? I don't own a home. Tell me what happens.
Wait, I don't know what that means.
Yeah.
I'm making the argument. What's the answer?
I've never, I.
What's the answer? Then funding.
Yeah, I don't know.
Through DESI emergency funding or through?
I don't even, so the, what, where are you getting this DESI emergency funding?
Christina from, from the FinCon meeting. Was it in Berlin or Boylston?
You're talking about extraordinary claims.
It was the woman.
Circuit breaker? Is that what you're talking about?
I don't know what she's talking about.
It was the, no, it was at the meeting in Boylston when the state rep, and it was Kennedy and Kilcoin were there. And I think, I asked, or somebody asked, what happens if we don't get this money for special needs? And I think one of them said when, one of, I think it was Meg Kilcoin, and we can get clarification before. I thought she said if, okay, I remember what it was. I said, okay, so we were talking about the process. Remember when the lawyer was saying the whole process? Like it goes through this, and then it goes to the vote, and the school committee does this? And again, he was wrong on that because remember, he talked to us after the meeting. So I think nobody really knows. But he, it was around that point in time. And I said, so what happens if it goes down and then they're going to give us our 2% increase? And it doesn't cover the special needs that we absolutely have to do mandated by the state? What do we do that if we don't, physically don't have that money to do the state mandates? And I think it was Meg Kilcoin said, you'd have to apply for a DESI emergency relief to cover.
Heard of that. I don't know.
So what do you?
So I don't, I thought that's what I heard.
So Nancy.
Look at.
If people don't want to fund a 71% increase, a 1.2 million dollar increase.
They have to. They have to. Well, then we cut teachers. I mean, that's what it comes down to.
Who do you want to cut?
Right, right. That's what it comes down to. You have to.
All right, so that's the end, that's the answer.
Yeah.
That's the answer.
But if you don't have kids in the school.
Right, yeah.
Okay, that's the answer.
I will double check on that.
Special ed. I thought, we were talking about specific special ed.
She's talking about extraordinary relief from circuit breaker.
Oh, maybe that's what.
Which is, yeah, different, which is not a lot, which will never cover this. I will double check, but I've never heard of it.
I thought that she said something about DESI would have, you'd have to apply for some type of emergency relief. It was the word relief.
It was. It had to be the extraordinary relief. Right.
I can't, I don't know.
I'll look into it.
I just remember we said exactly that, what happens? Because you can't, at a certain point, to cover 1.2 million dollars, cutting two teachers isn't going to make 1.2 million dollars. Right? You're going to have, you're not going to physically have enough staff in the school to run the school safely. The school have, so I thought that they were saying, but I could be wrong. So I don't know.
All right.
Anyways, but.
I didn't mean to get off.
But this is the way people are thinking though. I mean, this is other towns. I'm seeing on Facebook now, towns are pushing for these votes.
Yep.
I've seen multiple towns.
Yep.
They're pushing for these votes, and it's parents, because they don't have the funding. And like to your point, they're, they're making cuts, and they don't have enough.
Yeah, it's happening everywhere. It's very, very common. So our health broker called, so it's actually a 10.5% increase. And I had 10 in there, so I increased it by 5%.
Oh my god.
And then I put in how our supply costs, utilities, electricity, and heating are increasing by 10 to 15%. And our support services are increasing by approximately 10%.
And that's in line with grocery prices, so.
Yeah.
What do you want to do?
So we started off with our district-wide. So district-wide, we're at a 2.7 million dollar increase at 15%. And I broke it out by the normal categories that are broken out for you at school committee.
This is the entire budget?
This is the entire budget altogether. As you can see, out-of-district tuitions are 71%. That is a huge chunk of our budget.
Instruction, support, special, that's the paras that we're asking for, the 7% increase. The paras, the teachers' contract increases that are mandatory.
Pretty much everybody but administration.
But that's salaries.
Yep, yep, yep.
And it's how many new heads, it's the three paras, we have a couple who has.
Individually, but yeah, yeah.
It's heads and it's salary increase.
So then we want to start it, start, we'll start, we'll go through each school. So we'll start with Berlin.
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 I just thought I did it right.
So can I tell you what I think about?
I did it in the car yesterday. My husband and I are, he's like, Berlin. I'm like, this is what we're doing on a car ride.
Think about saying BUR.
It is.
Cold.
Think about cold.
I thought I had shorts. I did, Berlin.
I know you did fine.
I did, but I guess.
All you gotta do is put the emphasis on the first syllable. Don't give up. They get so offended about that. I had practice for a long time. Somebody called me out on it.
It's just so fun.
Berlin.
BUR.
Think about like saying BUR, like you're saying BUR.
Berlin? Berlin. Is that better?
If you think of it as B U R L I N, it will help you.
That's what I was doing.
That's how I think of it.
Okay, enrollment, and I'm not going to say it. So right now, we only have 18 kindergarteners currently registered for next year.
In Berlin?
Seriously?
We're shocked.
What?
Oh, don't you worry.
Yep.
No, they can't.
So we're keeping an eye on it.
A lot of people haven't written in or something.
Yeah.
That's what we're thinking.
Right, it's early, it's February, right? But we're keeping an eye on it, you know, so on the side.
Nice.
You can see it all broken out by classes. They have two classes per grade, and you can see the class sizes of where we stand. Obviously, if kindergarten doesn't increase, we'll revisit that as we go throughout the budget process.
Well, John will be teacher, and he still has to hire one.
Yeah.
Now, is this the lowest you've seen for this time of year for kindergarten in Berlin?
I would say yes, for kindergarten, yeah. I've seen it at eight for first grade, but that was years ago, so.
So enrollment's actually going down by 10. But we'll see what, what happens with kindergarten.
Yeah, but who knows?
Right.
I think I know 18 kindergartners just in my neighborhood.
Oh, really?
Yeah, mine, mine's one of them.
So maybe they haven't registered.
Yeah.
So then you can look at the budget by itself for Berlin. Is that better?
That was awesome.
Okay, good. And then the next page, we go over what the increases are. So we are for general education. We currently have one kindergarten para-professional, various software for teaching and learning. We have our portrait of a graduate. We're bringing back one custodian back in house.
Nice.
We're still going to purchase the storage unit. It's very small. And the power school upgrade with electric report cards.
I would take out the electronic report cards. I thought we were going to mix that.
Okay.
How much is that of the whole budget? So why not keep it?
So you're just hiring one kindergarten para in Berlin?
Just one, yep.
And do they already have one? Well, if they're for 18 kids, they're not going to.
They have one, but it's being used for preschool right now.
Oh, because she's on maternity, right?
Yes.
But she's.
Well, she's not, she didn't stay. So now she actually is a preschool teacher.
So they need to hire somebody.
Yeah, right.
So there will be two kindergarten paras in Berlin.
Two.
All right.
But Nancy, these are above-level anyways.
That is correct.
So we are not doing health?
Oh, you don't. I can tell you what we're not doing.
Health was not in there.
Have it up here.
Yep. And what was the other? So it was health, and I have it all right here.
Okay.
And that might.
I sent it to you, right?
It's got to be on the drive, right?
So this is the answer to that question we were talking about earlier. You've got two out-of-district tuitions this year, and 100% increase, of course.
Well, is that two things or one? Who knows?
This is what we did last time, right?
It's just the total increase, yeah.
Total.
It's two new.
Yeah, there's no health, no recess on shade.
That's not it. Didn't I send it to you yesterday?
Health, floating nurse, occupational therapist, technician.
Oh, the floating nurse, we got, yeah, so there'll be three nurses.
Let me just, I'll be really.
Yeah, there'll be one.
Yeah, there's no.
Mix the health.
Health, the floating nurse, occupational therapist for all of them.
The OT, yep, that's right, the occupation.
Technology technician unless they, we did this.
The technician.
Wraparound services, writing curriculum.
I'm less worried about the right.
The curriculum stuff, yeah.
The teachers do that stuff.
It's a great writing curriculum. Have you ever heard of Rockin' Writing Resources?
No.
I did that when I homeschooled. It's so good.
Rocking Writing Resources?
It's so good. Read aloud novels, electronic report cards, you write. That was not, that was already off.
So the health teacher is kind of the bummer.
Floating nurse, we felt that at this point, it was stabilized.
Floating nurse, yeah. Right, yeah.
At this point, I think we can go back to.
I agree with that. That was a pain point during COVID.
It was in this first year that we had put that in for the health teacher.
Oh. Floating nurse, technician, OT. So we're not, Berlin already had their own adjustment counselor.
Right. Boylston has it through the grant. Berlin does not have an adjustment counselor. They just have a school psychologist.
Oh, psychologist.
Oh, they do have a school psychologist, but they don't have an adjustment counselor.
Right, and they never have.
And they don't have the need.
Correct. So we cut the .40 health teacher, .25 floating nurse, .25 IT technician, .25 OT, occupational therapist, miscellaneous curriculum, wraparound services. And we moved the capital items to capital.
Yep.
I want to look at the wraparound services and see if we can get a grant for that. That's the one, I mean, I know there are people, that's like 10 families. It will only take.
Oh, I know. That was such a great program. That was like through the ASABIT collaborative that you were talking about.
It was funded through the SRT3 grant. That's the one. And that grant ends September 2024, so.
How much is that one? Do you know, top of your head? But that's okay, don't worry.
We've used up everything but about, what did we say, 36,000 to pay for, well, that's another piece, to pay for the adjustment counselor in Boylston. We're not going to be able to fund that.
You're kidding? So you're going to get rid of her?
Well.
What are you going to do?
We'll talk.
We're going to, yeah, figure it out.
Yeah, we haven't talked to any staff yet about.
What's the difference between adjustment counselor and a school psychologist?
In, in the schools, a school psychologist typically works with the special education department. They do testing. They're not really, their primary job is not to do like social, emotional work with children. But they do get pulled into it just by which of what their background is.
Got it.
That's, that's the difference.
I feel like there has been such a strong need, at least in Boylston Elementary School, from what I've seen, for the school psychologist to be doing the social, emotional, that it's almost like the adjustment counselor's job was overflowing. So to not have that is a huge concern.
You heard about it from Caroline last meeting, about how even at the high school, they have these issues.
Yes.
You need more people? You need more?
That's a bummer, so that, hopefully we can figure something out for that. Okay, all right.
So done for level service. We have two new out-of-district students. We have our benefit and insurance increase. The custodian, we're bringing back to in-house, and increase needs for special education transportation.
Can I ask you a question? Do you remember, and I meant to write it down, we met with Berlin, what Kristen said? Just to meet level services, how much she, they would have to cut from their budget? And then to do above-levels, I think the above-level was, I remember, 400 to 500.
It was like 900 and something.
Oh, 900 for above. Whoa, then was it?
900, yeah, right.
Was the above-level services?
Yeah.
So that's what they were saying at the last meeting.
They can't even meet level.
They couldn't, they were like 450 shy to meet level.
To meet level.
We have been working with them since, for two weeks now.
For Berlin.
Berlin and.
What, and Boylston?
Boylston, too.
That's great.
Get out of the conversation.
Okay.
But we have been trying to work with them. They're, they are, Berlin really is working with us, so we'll see tonight.
That's why I want the answer. If you don't, then what?
You should ask them tonight.
We said that, and they're going to, they're going to say, well, then it goes to vote. What happens if the vote turns down?
We ask, we, I think that's.
That's the question of what happens. It goes to vote.
You can't cut enough, you can't cut enough from this budget to make that up if they don't do.
Even level service.
Yes.
You can't cut enough. So where does it come from? I don't want to pay more taxes. I don't have a kid in school, so what?
I know. Both towns, I would say that both towns have communicated they want to work with us. They're trying to figure out. They've been coming up with some solutions, possible solutions. I think we'll hear about that in Berlin tonight. I don't know about Boylston, but they may, we may be meeting with them before the vote next week as well. We're trying to see if they'll put together a meeting with us.
Yeah, at least so, I feel like going into this meeting, we need to know, I feel like it would be helpful to know for the school committee, before voting on this budget, where the towns stand. Because if the towns are.
Are they still interested in coming to speak?
They want to, yeah.
They're going to speak at the school committee meeting?
What did you decide to do, Mike, after, while we were going back?
We got to talk about the agenda later, so.
Okay, yep. I didn't know if you still wanted them to come or remember.
I think it'd be good, but we'll talk about it with the agenda.
All right.
I agree.
All right. All right, so then Boylston Elementary, enrollment is currently, three, it's down by three.
How is that?
That's our current enrollment in kindergarten is at 54.
Oh, there's only 50?
Yep.
What's the population in Boylston? Do you know all that stuff you had?
No.
No, what do you know now?
About 5,000, about 5,000 people in Boylston. I think just under.
So in Boylston Elementary, we're looking at a 20% increase. Our highest being out-of-district tuitions at 150% increase.
And that's just a level service budget, huh?
For out-of-district tuitions, yeah, yep. So that, that is two new out-of-district students. And then what we're adding in for above-level is three kindergarten para-professionals. So we have a para-professional in each kindergarten class. We currently have in there the .60 adjustment counselor. That was paid through the SRT grant last year, but now will be added into the budget. We increased our school's choice to cover it, but.
Wait, now what? Say that again?
We increased our school choice allocation to cover that, which we'll go over on another slide.
From the school choice budget.
Yeah.
So you're keeping the adjustment counselor?
For right now.
At .6, not full-time?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
Was that three days?
About three days, yeah.
And then we have the report card. Should I take that off too?
Yeah.
So we go to the health teacher, floating nurse, technician, the two classroom teachers, which is heartbreaking. So my one thing about the classroom teachers, if we look at fifth grade enrollment. So if we look at. I mean, I, I know everyone here understands it. But, so this fifth grade class is graduating. Chances are, the new one coming in is going to need three teachers. So Boylston is going to need a teacher in one year, or your classes will be. So that's not pushed, that's not off, that's not cut, that's moved out a year.
Yeah, we'll have to get another teacher.
Yeah.
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 I think everything, right? It's a three-year plan, right? That's the idea, isn't it?
I guess my question is, if we don't have the money.
But it comes at two or one if you don't fund it this year.
Right, two or one.
That's what I'm saying. What happens next year? You're saying.
That's what I keep saying.
That's the scary thing to me.
You know, they kicked the bucket down the road for so long.
And that's what we've been doing for years, and that's why we're in this position that we're in. And I think that's why a lot, a lot of towns are, because during COVID, nobody was spending money. And everything has gone up now, and everybody's kind of in this position where it's like, okay, like, we, we can't sustain it this anymore.
Right.
So we've been kicking the can down.
Yes, and by.
For years, but now on top of it, we have the, the significant out-of-district.
Yes. But those aren't going to go away next year unless kids are graduating out, which you guys would have that data.
We're looking at that, yeah.
And I don't know if there are kids that are graduating out, but with that, could new ones be coming in? We don't know.
Absolutely.
So I guess my concern is that you can only move this stuff for so long, but you can't have classes with 30 kids and no, no aides.
I don't know. And I, this is a question I have to ask the towns.
Yeah.
You know, what are we supposed to do? At what point is this going to, everything drop out of the bottle? Because we can't keep going this way.
Right.
How are we, how are we going to have these, how are we going to have schools that are decent schools? I, I don't know. We're working with the school to, I don't know.
So why are the classes so big anyway? We've always had small classes.
Which, which?
Any class, pick one. We've always had small classes. Why are they getting bigger?
Building.
What? No, we don't build.
I don't know if they're.
Have you seen Perry Road?
Where do you see bigger?
I'm just, I see a 58-student class, a 50, 54-student class versus 39 and 44. The older classes are smaller, the younger classes are getting bigger. Why are they getting bigger? The older classes are smaller, the younger classes are getting bigger. Why are they getting bigger?
Because you're building.
Why? What do you mean we're building? So what? We have to build. People need to sell property and develop and make money.
Well, then we need to take care of the kids.
I think that's his point.
Doesn't mean there's kids coming in.
I think if you're building those million-dollar homes on Perry Road, you're filling them with kids.
At first I didn't understand where you were going, but you're asking a question to get the real answer.
Exactly.
I didn't get that at first. That's why I'm like, are you serious?
No.
But now I get them.
You're gonna have that question.
Right. It's a great question. Yeah, but why is your, but I'm curious to know why the Berlin number has decreased so much in here.
That number can't be right.
I don't think it's right.
Is people not paying attention? Is people just haven't got to it yet? The holidays are barely over.
People have not gotten to it yet.
I mean-
Despite the four thousand emails.
So Julie, remember you were saying-
Half the emails don't get to people. They don't give you the right email. It ends up in a spam folder, promotions folder, somewhere else. I've asked Paul about this. Mail, I don't know, people don't check their mail anymore. Younger kids, the younger parents, there are more technology, but if the technology's not getting to them.
And they'll just show up at the door. They're new to town. They're gonna just show up.
Right, if they've got a kid-
They'll come in the spring.
Come May and June, they'll start asking about it.
Yeah, come May, yeah, they'll start asking. Yeah, I mean, also, I know there's, not huge, but I know like from second to third, we're actually losing a kid. Because I know there's a kid. Yeah, so it's not gonna be thirty-nine, it'll be thirty-eight.
Julie, just think about it. This year's kindergarten sports, right? Pre-K sports. You were struggling to find coaches because you had so many kids. So those kids are coming to school next year.
That's right.
So you know they're there. They just haven't signed up yet.
Yeah, I have fifty kids for T-ball.
You can probably actually get some pretty good stats on that.
I would actually, yeah, yeah. I don't think, I'm in Mike's camp on that one. I don't think that enough is accurate.
But there might be kids that are being held back, because you're seeing that a lot more now too, right? With the pandemic, they were home, they wanted to do preschool before they go to kindergarten. So there might be kids that are, maybe that could have something. But I have a ton for Boyleston T-ball, I have at least fifty kids.
Wow.
Kindergarten.
That's kinder and preschool.
Wow.
Yeah.
Kinder and pre. So that's just Boyleston, so.
So you're gonna have the numbers. I mean, you can't-
There's definitely more kids.
Like Megan said, Megan knows about real estate. You can't have all this building without more families coming to town.
Those houses, yeah, they're still going wild in Perry Road in Boyleston. Compliment circle is in my room, so.
Look at that, a hundred and fifty percent increase, huh? Out of district tuition. BES out of district. Yep. But every kid deserves a right to an education, right? The state's gotta step in and help.
Yeah, that was what they were saying when they came to the, well, you were there, right? Were you at that meeting with Meg Kukonin?
Oh, no, I was at the Berlin.
Who was at that meeting? What was she saying?
I talked to her about it. So the MASCE list, everything, all the districts are right into the state because there's legislation proposed to increase the amount of reimbursement.
Yes.
From what it is now to whatever they're proposing. Yeah, so it would help, but it's only ninety percent above a certain level too. It's not ninety percent of your total. So it's more like fifty percent, sixty percent.
Yeah, it's a year and a year, right?
They're not gonna do it, so people get on, so if people are upset about it, then get on to it.
Well, that's what hopefully these reps are supposed to be advocating for.
They said they would.
They did say they would.
But not for the always, I mean, not in passing.
Right, yeah. It's not gonna happen this year.
Well, you were at that meeting. They were like, well, you know.
It'll take a few years for that to even, because once they approve it, it'll probably take a year or two.
I mean, we got our, we did get our chapter seventy back. I think it's a three hundred, around three hundred and fifty thousand increase.
That's good.
That was, you know, more than a lot of towns saw, you know, so. And this is all reflective of that.
Good.
Okay, so then we move on to Tohoto. Um, so if you look at the enrollment, this includes, um, the school choice that's gonna be brought forward to you. So includes fifty-five total for enrollment, new enrollments, not enrollments.
Nancy, here's a question. When it comes time to talk about school choice, we're gonna need to see per student spending from this budget, per school. We're gonna need to flash that on the screen, because it's what, like eighteen or so at Berlin, sixteen or seventeen at Tohoto, and fourteen or fifteen at Boyleston, if I remember correctly from last year.
Yeah.
So spending that much per, and I know accounting and math, but spending that much per student, for taxpayer students, taxpayer dollars, only getting five thousand per student for school choice. It's a tough pill to swallow for people.
Depends what school.
Okay, but still, it's not, you know.
Saving our budget right now. I'm a very pro school choice.
I know you guys are, but there's a lot of people who are not.
Because it saves the budget.
I agree with that when it comes to-
It saves the budget.
Well, because there's fixed costs.
But you just said it's fifty-five thousand dollars over a twenty-two million dollar budget. So whatever, whatever it is you say.
I got more slots.
Wait, are all these fifty-five school choices?
No, 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 no. This is not, this includes the number of school choice that's being recommended.
Plus what's already there.
Yeah, twenty-five additional school choice being recommended, and then the difference, the thirty is just-
Twenty-five thousand dollars or twenty-five students?
Students.
That's gonna be a tough one, though. That's gonna be tough.
Let me fight my case first.
All right. So enrollment at Tohoto, is that where we're on right now?
Yes.
Negative, 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 six thousand percent increases.
So you had seventy-five in eighth grade. You're projecting that four are gonna leave for ninth grade?
Seven, yes. You always have dropouts, eighth and ninth.
Like, really?
So that's why you're gonna add, that's why you're adding, you know you're gonna lose kids in ninth grade. You know you're gonna. They're going to the other schools. That's why, where you take advantage of your school choice.
Okay, so why would we lose kids? Why don't we keep those kids?
Because they're sports, they're terrible.
Sports, programming.
So let's improve the sports. Okay, what do they do, what do they do in an ass of a valley?
Private school. Tech.
Okay, we have tech.
No, like vocational trades.
Okay, so we can't do electricity and plumbing. Okay, fair enough. We can do computers, IT.
Yep.
Why can't we do that?
We can.
Keep the kids, we don't have to-
We can.
You gotta enhance your programming.
Yep.
Robotics, engineering.
So is that in its plan? Sure. Why don't we do that? Let's do that. Let's spend the money on that.
I know half the kids that left last year was because of sports. Half of the sixty, eight of them are sports.
So those kids left for sports because they had the ability to, for whatever reason?
Yep.
Okay, the kids that are left, their sports are even worse now. Their arts are even worse now. Their drama band is even worse now.
Yeah, we don't have kids for programs.
So they're leaving because those programs aren't good enough. Let's make those programs good enough.
Yep.
You know, they're going to a private school. They're choosing to continue to pay taxes in this town, plus now pay private school tuitions.
I know.
Are we that bad? How bad can we be?
We need some help. We-
We need money.
We need money.
This is cool.
This is a terrible district. I can't even imagine anyone would want to move here. My property value is gonna tank.
That's when the kids will be late to eighth to ninth year. It's gonna make all, it's like everything else, it's making a huge divide in society. So anyone that can afford to is gonna pull their kid, pay taxes, and pay for private school.
Why? Because we're that bad?
Yeah, if they're, if the school doesn't have, if the school doesn't have, I mean, I don't know if Tohoto-
So let's make the school have it.
I'm a hundred percent on board with you.
I think it's a, it's a big, it's a bigger conversation too, like, you know, in my opinion. I mean, there's great things happening at Tohoto.
Yeah.
There's really great things happening there that I've seen. Um, I think our middle school is struggling significantly and has been.
Okay, let's fix it.
We need the right leader.
For so long. So I think like, you know, with Carol's leadership and whoever's gonna get hired to be the leader there.
So we have this problem, but we're gonna cut the vice principal? Is that what I'm hearing?
Now, that is a huge, I think we need to. Because we need two separate minds. I think there needs to be more separation in that.
The other possibility, we first talked about was having a principal in the high school and a principal in the middle school.
Yes, because I think it needs to be two separate organizations where you're doing two separate things because, yeah.
But right now we're going, but then we're-
Then you don't have an assistant.
Principal, right? Now we're hiring, we're-
Yeah, but what's salary difference? It's significant, the assistant principal versus the principal for middle school? Oh, it is.
It's about ten thousand dollars difference, I would say.
Well, that's not that bad.
Yeah, but then we're running a, we're gonna use for the assistant principal instead of high school principal. Like, we've already run the Tohoto principal position for the high school. Like, we're already-
Julie, how is-
Do you know what I'm saying?
So I do, but can you just change that?
Plus, that person wouldn't have an assistant.
You don't need, I mean, it's a small school. You can run a high school.
I don't know, I'm just saying.
Look how many kids there are. There's sixty-two kids graduating our senior class. We're not, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so the, what, the middle school would be responsible for six, seven, and eight, and then nine through twelve.
I didn't even think of that, though.
I do think that that-
That was originally what we talked about.
That's so smart.
We did talk about that last year.
Yeah, but then we thought of one and then two assistants. Now the one assistant's being cut.
So if we can't have two-
To keep this pattern of one man and one assistant is-
Because you need different stuff. You need different, it needs to be like different campaigns, different-
Different everything, different mentality.
Yeah, because younger kids-
So you can't go back now, because you're already-
We're in the throes of this right now.
Bummer. That would have been great.
Why? Because the job was advertised as an assistant, so to say now, instead of being an assistant for a middle high school, you'd just be a middle school principal.
Yes, we have to go back for a job description.
Because the person may not be, because you've already got resumes for that.
Oh, yeah, they're already, they've interviewed for the principal's position.
Oh, I didn't know that.
No, we'd still have the principal.
No, you keep the principal as the principal, but they just want to print, pull over the middle.
They wouldn't do the middle school, and the assistant principal ones are in motion.
Yeah, that's the problem.
I don't know what's happened with that, yeah.
So you can't change it?
Could you?
Too much work.
It's gonna take more time, of course, but other than that, why can't you?
Because they're, well, we could-
Do whatever you want, but.
Yeah.
Well, how far down the process are you? I thought that was behind BES. We are starting interviews today for BES.
Well, BES, I'm not worried about that. It's just Tohoto, we would have to-
Yeah, no, I mean, I thought you guys were after BES interviewing. No, or they already started interviewing for the assistant?
They started this today.
But things have already been put out there, is what she's saying.
No, for Tohoto.
Tohoto.
Where are you in, yeah, where are you in the process?
They put out there for, they posted the position, so people have applied for the assistant.
So it would have to be reposted.
Well, we'd have to also do a new job description.
It would have to be a totally new thing, and then the people that applied for that, we'd have to say, sorry, not doing this, gonna do this.
Right, and we'd have to also see-
Thirty days, I think they have to, right?
So we'd have to also see-
We've got a week to change it.
If the person, whoever you pick for the principal of the high school, of the whole school wants to be the, just the high school.
Be a step down for that person. Oh, I think they'd welcome it.
But then we'd have to raise the cost of the principal's salary, so now you, we don't, now we're adding more money.
Sure.
We're adding, instead of just doing a principal and an assistant.
Assistant principal to principal.
All right, so how about this?
I think that's a-
Let's not change anything. Continue going on the path we're going.
It's not a good idea.
Will the school be successful? Will it turn around? Will people be happy? Can you make it work?
We can't answer that question. Carol can.
Well, if we have the right people on board.
Okay. All right, good. Then get the right people. Let's go.
Yeah, working on it.
All right. Moving on.
Trying.
Oh, that would be a good idea.
The other thing is too, Mike, we have to realize, who are we getting for our candidates? What are they thinking about our school system and who are we attracting? We had some, some interesting candidates in the pool of candidates we received.
Yep.
That's maybe something they move in next year then.
Whoever they are, they're going to be more supported by this committee than anyone in recent past, I think.
No, absolutely.
And they'll have the best boss.
We let many go, who we didn't interview.
Yeah.
I believe though, you know, if your kid's happy in middle school, they'll stay, because they want to stay with their friends.
I agree, and I think that-
And we're just missing the mark at the middle school level.
Yeah.
Not to say that there's not great things happening, because there also are, but we're missing it.
So what about, again, are we, is this taking this assistant, the second assistant principal, are we taking this out of the budget? Or are we pushing it? And when are we pushing it to?
We took, currently, we took it out of the budget.
So that's off the district improvement plan, off the budget?
For this year.
For this year. Is it pushed for like FY twenty-five or?
We haven't even gotten that far yet, but we could, I mean, we could make it an FY twenty-five goal. If we did, if we have a principal, assistant principal, down the road, we could add an assistant principal. That's easier to do, to assistance of a principal, than what we were talking about, the alternate, which would be-
Two principals.
Two principals. So we can add.
So we could add, but again, we're at that whole conversation of if we can't afford it now, what's to say we're gonna afford it next year or the year after, and how long is it gonna be until we can afford it?
Right.
And you don't probably usually see principals for that small of a grade, six to nine or six to nine for middle school, such as, you do.
It depends on the size of the schools, yeah.
Like Shrewsbury has a five-six and then a seven-eight. Each building has their own principal, right? Yeah, so that's what I'm saying is like-
They have a large population.
Right, it's way bigger. Their five-six is probably the same size as Tohoto. But the question is, and I've always been confused on this being resident of Boyleston, is Tohoto one school that's grade six through twelve, or is Tohoto a middle school that's six through eight that has its own separate mindset, and a high school that's grades nine through twelve? Or is it just one building with one vibe, one, you know, atmosphere, one leader? That's that whole grade, because that's a real, that's, the kids, just being in the building, looking at kids in sixth grade versus kids in twelfth grade, it's like dealing, I mean, well, it's like dealing with kindergartners versus fifth graders.
Originally, it was designed to be two separate halls.
That's what I thought.
But then they had to share teachers. That's what happened, like the specialist music art, phys ed, and some of the, just some of the content area teachers, which is why they had a crossover between the middle and high school. But originally it was designed, that's why that, there's that one area that's middle school primarily, but they do still cross over. That's, and you'd have to hire a separate music teacher, a separate art teacher.
I mean, down the road, that would be a huge, but that might be something that we need to drive the change.
The only way that would happen is if you built a separate, I think, a separate middle school, and you were forced to, and you were forced to have that separate space and those additional teachers.
All right, yeah, it's just a bummer. All right, I mean, it's what it is. Yeah, moving on.
All right, so for the overall budget for Tohoto, it's a twelve percent increase. Highest increase is out of district tuitions of forty-nine percent, four hundred and fifty thousand. Um, our fixed charges are increased by twelve percent and maintenance and operations by twenty-one percent.
The maintenance and operations, I'm sorry to interrupt, the maintenance and operations on each one is like about twenty-something percent. Like, can you just, so what is that again? Custodial utilities, maintenance of buildings, and tech infrastructure, so that's the tech.
That's bringing in Berlin and Tohoto, that's bringing the custodian back in house. It's in Boyleston especially, it's increasing for repairs.
Repairs, yeah, buildings are huge, so that's that.
Kids can dodge rain buckets. They've been doing it for years. What's the problem? That's how we did it in my day.
Is plumbing bad at BES? Lead paint, asbestos.
You're going to have-
But they do like water tests and stuff.
Yeah. I think they do. No, it's not that the water's bad, it's the plumbing that's bad. Sorry if I said it wrong. The water's fine.
Plumbing, like the actual pipes?
Like the pipes. They're old, they're old. Like, they can't even, there's a restroom in the offices right now where the pipe is just rotted.
Oh, wow, okay.
It's just, a lot of the stuff is old. And so a lot of the repair lines have increased to keep up. HVAC repair lines, electrical repairs, plumbing, grounds, landscaping, everything. There's just not enough money in all these accounts, so that is part of the reason why the maintenance is up. And utilities.
Well, you had a-
Yeah, utility oil.
Principal doing landscaping in August, from what I hear.
Yes.
We can't have that. She needs to focus on school and landscaping.
She literally did the mulch bed in the front with her father.
We need grounds maintenance.
We didn't have a facility guy either. Like, everything was moved over.
Yeah, true. She was, saw it, she was embarrassed. She fixed it. It was a very nice thing, but yes, I agree. Um, I think Berlin has landscape, but there wasn't anything, but Boyleston doesn't. So I think that's part of the problem. Berlin, somebody comes and mulch-
Mulch is outside in a flowerbed. You don't need mulch to learn. Why?
Why don't you need, what?
You're saying not to have it?
You don't need mulch to learn in school? What's mulch got to do with it?
Well, it keeps the grounds nice.
So what?
Well, then I'll just let my lawn overgrow in my neighborhood and see what it does to my property value.
It has to look nice.
It has to look nice.
Aesthetics matter.
Why?
Well, it's gonna drive the property value down, all the houses around it.
To learn?
Oh, suck it up. Read a book.
So I'd rather read a book of nice landscaping. Thank you very much.
We'll see.
Where do you read your books? How's your landscaping?
Actually, it's my landscaping.
Point made. And the landscaping also includes, you know, pulling all the weeds and the old flowers and that can really make it look crummy. I don't think it looks like Better Homes and Gardens, even when they finished off. Even with what we did.
No, but Boyle, I thought Boyleston didn't have that in the budget.
They didn't have it in the budget.
So did you add it this year?
That was something we discovered.
Thank you, Nancy.
Something that we discovered that was not in the budget.
I think it was always in there and Bob just moved it.
It was never, no, the invoices were coming through.
No, not-
It was, it was always in Berlin and got removed.
But Bob was very much-
Yeah, movie.
Very different than what I do. I like to just have it there.
Can I just tell you why? I know why. Ryan is out there blowing the leaves and doing all that stuff. The custodian goes out and he's doing that stuff. I see him during the day.
Which is fine. Which is fine.
Which is fine, but he needs to be.
But he's also getting a school ready to start school.
And cleaning floors and cleaning, well, no, he's like doing it during the day, I've seen him outside. So, yeah, I mean, we should have somebody do the mulch.
Shouldn't be spreading mulch.
No.
No.
No, 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 no.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the playground mulch is a safety thing.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, in fact, you can't even.
So to tell you.
Three inches thick.
Yep, it shouldn't even be open.
Or five inches thick, yeah.
So to tell you what I. Out of Tohoto. So we took, since we last approved, approved the budget in December, we took out nine hundred and forty-four thousand.
From Tohoto alone?
From Tohoto alone, which is the assistant principal, making the athletic director full-time, the math teacher for financial literacy. Lab quest for chemistry, physics and AP biology, a point four oh health teacher, point two five cloning nurse, point two five technician, IT technician, point two five occupational therapist. Miscellaneous curriculum, wraparound services in a laptop cart.
Is there a school left?
I am so sad about the financial literacy, that is such a necessity.
These problems if we don't have financial literacy. I can tell you a story that happened to me last week with some of these young kids.
We have it, and we have it in the program studies, so we're trying to figure out how we can.
That and health. Health is extremely important.
Health at Tohoto.
Oh, they do, thank God. So the health, the health teacher is just the elementary.
We had it applied.
I mean, it has to be part of the curriculum.
The health teacher, originally, was it not supposed to be?
No, we have a health school.
So that new health teacher was split.
Yeah, the new health teacher was split, no, it was split amongst all three.
If they get buried, it always was, it shouldn't have been.
Should have been elementary.
Yeah, see, it says point four health teacher she has in there.
Point four in Berlin from six and.
She has it as point four in Tohoto, so. That's going to screw up your numbers.
I know.
I, I thought that too, Nancy. It was just elementary.
Or did I type it in there? Maybe I did.
So, yeah, the financial literacy, the, um, the.
Athletic director.
The athletic director is a little bit of a bummer and the assistant principal is a huge bummer.
But the good news is, we kept in. Portrait of the graduate, the additional late bus on Wednesdays.
The late bus is great.
Update AP psychology textbooks, physics lab equipment, the mathematic programs, program from grade six through eight. Computer numerical control for the technology class, subscription for Gizmo, and various software for teaching and learning in the storage unit.
What is Gizmo again?
That's a.
Math?
Interactive online platforms, experimental platform that they use in biology and.
Oh, bio, okay.
Middle and high school.
What about the music, the music stuff? Didn't we have music stuff in there?
Technology, we added that with the folder.
Yep, we put that in the folder.
Okay, I hope.
And then you have your special ed, that's above-level service.
I just wanted to tell you, I think, in our plan, our three-year plan, it's elementary.
It is, okay, I'm thinking I might have just typed it in there, yep, okay. So we're looking for an additional special education teacher, a point five board certified behavioral analyst. We would like to really keep going with the special education reserve fund, because that will help us in future years, as we're seeing with our increases in out of district tuition. Our Orton Gillingham training and training for our paraprofessionals, applied behavioral analysis training.
So the Orton Gillingham is for dyslexic students or no?
No, this is just training for, it's another tool that they use in special education.
Okay.
You're thinking of the dyslexia screener, that's.
Did we keep that in?
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
So what happens if you just, let's just cut all the special education stuff that's above-level service, all three schools, what, what happens?
I think if you, I think if the only other way.
But it's above-level service, so we don't need it, right, it's just what you want.
I think there are needs for.
Yeah, but then, yeah, that's a problem, then we don't keep those kids.
Right.
Right?
So we need.
So what happens? Later and then that goes more?
Our parents are not, these folks are not trained to work.
Training, yeah.
So what, so what happens to the kids, what do they go out of district and then?
No.
They just get screwed?
Well, they're not, they don't have the proper, the teachers with proper training.
They can't.
Or aides with proper training.
But it's above-level service, you don't, it's just, above-level is just what you want, it's all your hopes and dreams and wishes.
Not in special education.
It's above-level service.
I think probably it's there, Mike, we could probably think about paying that fee.
I have some authority of the life certificate.
Yeah.
We'll go over that.
It's just, it's a question I want to think about, you know?
It's something.
It's above, it's above-level service, it can be cut without any impact to your level service budget.
We have not had this training.
If you, I can tell you, if you cut that special ed teacher, you will have students who go out of district.
Okay.
Increases will be higher.
So instead of, what's a full-time special education teacher cost?
Put in a master six, what is it, seventy, yeah.
So we'll save seventy, but we'll end up having to spend another, what, a hundred at least?
At least.
At least.
A hundred and fifty.
So that's your answer.
One kid, that's one.
One kid, yeah. In special education, you can handle how many kids, yeah.
Good call. You might lose teachers because they don't want to have to deal with the extra.
Oh, yeah, that's a good answer, too.
I would also add that the BCBA, that we're, we have to add another one because our needs have increased significantly to lose students. This is somebody covering the.
Why, is there something in the water in these towns, what's going on?
It's everywhere.
Everywhere, increase the number of students, increase the probability that we get more students with needs.
Janelle said our, I thought Janelle said our percentage is average for special, yeah.
So the next slide.
So we're not special, it's just what it is.
Going to add in is this.
Thank you.
So this will be the next one.
Oh, this is good.
This is out of district. Yes.
Yeah, because this, I feel like with these FinComs, the point needs to be drilled home, because I don't think they understand. I, I didn't, I, I don't, last year, when the budget was first presented, I remember asking Bob a million questions about out of district. I just physically couldn't wrap my brain around the cost.
Is this a student naming here or is that the town? Is that a student? Or is that a town?
That's a town.
Okay.
Which, Ed, we'll take that out, because that's just a note as to what happened.
Yeah.
So as you can see, from twenty-two on, there's been increases. I mean, if you look back where we were in FY nineteen to where we are today, they almost doubled from twenty-two to twenty-one.
Wow. Is that older kids moving in or is that just young kids starting?
It's a mix of everybody, everything.
Okay, so that's probably here for a while then.
So I also have what's dropping off, I did this, um. By year of what we're losing, it's always a hard one to predict, because.
Yeah, who knows?
When you lose, you might just get one.
So you're just going by who's graduating?
Mm-hmm.
Or done schooling or whatever.
Yep.
Is that why there was a drop from nineteen to twenty in Berlin, because kids graduated out?
No, it's so hard because I wasn't here.
Yeah, because you weren't here, okay. I didn't know if that was a COVID, no, because they still had services, they went in, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, nineteen to twenty was a big drop.
Yeah, nineteen to twenty was a big drop.
Well, yeah, it's the move from one town to the other.
Twenty to twenty-one was.
What do you mean, the move from one town to the other?
The note right below it. One town's down, one town's up.
Twenty-one to twenty-two was insane.
Down, up, down, up.
You know what it probably was, is that a lot of those special needs kids were home because they didn't want to catch COVID.
Because move from here to here.
Yes, or the parents were like, well, if they're special needs, they're high risk for COVID, so they were like, I'm just going to keep my child home and care for them at home.
Just to this. That's significant.
That's, yeah, yeah.
That's going to be a question, I think.
After next year, we're going to have one drop off, three drop off in Tohoto. For a total of three hundred and thirty-one thousand.
But you never know what you get.
Right, exactly. Re-graduating, so that would.
But then, um, yeah.
The point, the point of this discussion, the point of this, the fact of this is here, that it, you can't control it, you can't predict it, you have to manage it.
Yeah, this is what we get the circuit breaker funds for from the state, but we only get ninety percent, or sorry, seventy-five percent.
Seven, about seventy-two to seventy-five, it's been ranging.
But it's not of the total cost, it's capped at what?
It's of the, what we claim, it's a whole.
It's a formula.
Based off of services and.
And you get it, it's in arrears.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
That couldn't be any more complicated, yeah.
So I thought this was an important slide to show.
Yep.
I think so, yeah.
You're going to put this in, Nancy?
Yeah, okay, yeah. Then you have our capital requests, since we, I'm going to ask you guys to revote on this too. And obviously, it's part of this, since we'd last met in December, we kind of rearranged some stuff. We took the copiers out and we put them into the capital requests. So the copiers are in here, we took the three D printers out of the general budget and put them into the capital request.
Why do you need three 3D printers?
Well, we're close back to what you were talking about with the technology, these are technology portions that utilize these.
So you might convince some kids to stay and take these courses instead of leave.
That's huge, huge. Um, we have our security system upgrade, let's start with the Berlin memorial, we have the roof, IT support, which includes.
Does that include the laptops?
Yep, well, for Berlin memorial includes Chromebooks and devices, and what else?
They're just little kids, why do they need, why does every kid need a device? We're trying to keep them out of the hands of the older kids, why do we need these devices? Why do we need a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to support IT in an elementary school? They're seven, eight, ten years old.
Yeah, they utilize, that's part of their learning.
Why?
They get online, they take their tests on those.
Because it's twenty twenty-three, is that why?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and unfortunately.
You take your own tests on.
Well, we have to keep up with other districts, the Ames web is on the computer too, isn't it? They don't know how to use the technology, then it can't do well.
That's the way the world's moving, moved, so we have to prepare the kids.
Issue than we were talking about.
That is an issue, and I agree with you.
Yeah, that's a phone issue, that's why.
Not the technology.
We have to keep up with other districts or the kids will be behind, because if they don't learn how to use it, then, think about if you went to work and you didn't know how to use a computer. It's like, oh, my husband does all day.
I'd be out of a job.
Exactly. Well, that's just it, right?
They have arguments in that elementary school about handwriting versus keyboard.
I had a conversation about cursive this weekend.
Yeah.
Because we were looking through old family stuff, you know?
That's what actually one of the candidates said, um, I don't know if I can disclose, I don't say who it is, but he said, um, we have to start thinking that we aren't, you know, these kids are not like BMX, play in the mud kind of kids. They want to go home and build something on a 3D printer.
Right.
And we have to teach them how to use these tools, it's just a way of the world.
I like that.
So you can either move with it and prepare your students, or you can say, we're not going to do that, and you're doing more of a disservice to them, because you're not getting them up to speed, which was a great point.
Disservice, I use that word.
Yep. Should I write it down?
Yeah.
For tonight?
Seriously.
When I raise my hand?
You mean when you raise your zoom hand?
Zooming, I just can't even.
I'm surprised.
Well, it, it ended up working out, but.
Well, yeah, not till later, way later.
I'm like ten, right?
Oh, is it late? Oh, God, oh, my God, school tomorrow, God, Carol, poor Carol, Carol will be up all night.
Carol will be up all night.
It's going to be an easy call.
I, I think it's going to be canceled if they're getting one.
I think this is one where you're just like, bam.
But I'm not saying anything.
Yeah, I remember our camera. It's going to be difficult, very difficult. All right, so the plumbing we're prepared, we have toilet compartments and two of the boys' room that need replacing.
Oh, okay.
Berlin.
That's what the student council is talking about.
That's important.
That just came up, right?
Yes.
Yes, that's new.
Yeah.
It just came up like.
Yeah, like this, like last week, two weeks ago, whatever, yeah, yeah.
Oh, because they brought that up as a student council thing months ago, but I just thought it was my daughter.
Maybe it never made it to us.
Yeah, there it is, so, it's there.
Yeah, but there it is.
I was like, just don't go in the boys' room.
And the.
Oh, God.
Four exterior doors need replacing.
Yep.
So a lot of the stuff that was, you know, we did this facility assessment, but we got to start doing some of the stuff that's in the assessment.
Yeah, I remember last week, talking about the security vestibles and all that, right, is that, this is part of that?
Uh-huh.
All right. Security is about security.
The other thing that's in here, through the town of Berlin, did I do it right?
No, not even close.
You did great.
Berlin, Nancy.
I've given up.
You'd say the first thing about putting the emphasis on the first syllable.
So don't say it like Berlin, Germany, that's the thing, that's the.
Berlin.
Yeah.
Can I just emphasize the B?
Emphasis on the first syllable, but don't say it, don't say it, she goes, B. Berlin.
It's one word.
Berlin.
Pretend it was a U, not an E.
Think of it as B U R L.
Yeah, perfect.
Or B U R L.
Not that long, but yes.
Berlin, Berlin.
That was good. Yep, like literally in six months, you'll be fine.
Six months?
By town meeting.
I've never thought, like, this is the most difficult part of my job.
You could just say this town, in this town.
Your town.
Yeah, that place.
So the fire, the police chief is getting a new truck.
In Berlin.
In Berlin, and part of the conversation with him and with Dan, there's, he, Dan goes to all the, our facility director, goes to all three schools constantly. Putting stuff in his personal vehicle, or a custodian's putting stuff in their personal vehicle, which is a liability, so we've been, um, had the opportunity to purchase this truck.
The old police truck.
The old police truck.
Wow.
It's a, like a Ford.
Yeah. Chevy truck.
Yeah, like an SUV, they can't just gift it?
So what, you're paying it back to the town?
We try.
Okay, so then when they're being and aiming about that expense, be like, this money's going right back to you.
Yeah.
And also, thirty-two fifty.
Back into the capital plan.
Yeah, so Nancy, for capital, um, I mean, in my head, I think about it this way, but I don't know if everybody else does, so these wouldn't be the expenses for one year, it's like, a lot of it's over like twenty-seven year, what do you do for a building, thirty years, right? It's amortized.
Principle and interest, only for Tohoto, everything else is one year.
You're not going to amortize like the HVAC?
Yeah, but it's a, it's a cash flow cost right now.
Yeah, it's cash, it's free cash.
Oh, it's for cash?
We don't, we're not doing really a P and L.
Right.
I don't know.
We don't have shareholders in.
Yeah, it's a little different, because it's, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, but like when you do the financials, don't you have the?
It still needs to pay, it still needs to be paid for today.
Right.
Oh, I, I get that, well, can't, that's the other thing I was wondering, can we like get a loan?
If you want it to cost more.
For what?
Like for the stuff that we can't pay for, like if we don't get the money, could we just get a loan and then pay it off a little by little?
For like.
I know this might sound crazy.
That involves more, I'm sure more town votes and all that, right, just like paying for.
Like if we, if we didn't have the money.
For this stuff?
I'm saying.
For a roof, get a HELOC, just take a HELOC out on BMS.
I'm kind of saying that, Mike, I know, I'm kind of like joking, but I'm kind of like, in my head, I'm kind of wondering like why the kind of school.
No.
Yeah, so did you ever, did you ever get the leases? It's got to have something in there about repair maintenance.
I, have I dug into it? No.
No, they have to be rewritten since the regional, they've been regionalized, they don't have leases.
No.
Swear, yeah.
Oh, fantastic, okay.
Really?
Well, all right, let's start negotiating.
No existing lease yet.
Because the district was regionalized?
That seems.
Yeah, because you have.
That's what Mary said.
Because you have a different legal entity, right, probably, something like that?
Really?
I don't know if that's for all the schools, but I know that's.
So capital is like the town.
Take care, we're, we're a tenant, take care of the damn.
Property.
Yeah, we're a tenant, that's right.
Right.
So we don't need a loan for that.
No.
Megan, print those pictures and bring them Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I can get more.
Yes.
Like literally this thing, so this morning, a child found something in a beanbag. I seriously, I I told Nancy, I.
Remember you're being recorded right now.
Like, yes, but I I I'm not joking, what my head went to is, is this part of the ceiling? I'm not joking. Cause it was like. So that's how bad the library ceiling is, I think. Yeah, I'll bring those pictures.
Somebody else had pictures.
Print it, I'm on the phone.
John already took photos. Is it Don? Dan has pictures.
Well, it would be, it might be a good idea to invite them, of might invite the council.
Print them and put them in slides.
Just invite the finance committee in to do a walkthrough.
I want the FinCom. Board. I'm dying for the, I I am dying for the Boylston FinCom and Select Board. The Select Board has kids, they've all been in the building. I'm dying for the Boylston FinCom. I would love for them to do a tour of B E S.
Yeah.
Because the first time I went in that building, I almost had a kid.
That's a great idea.
No, I I think it would be worthwhile because we're asking for, you know. What? Between the two elementary schools, close to over a million dollars.
Three million.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, three million. Total. Um, you know, I would love for them to come through the buildings and take a look. Take a look at that kitchen floor that we're asking thirty thousand for. Take a look at that cafeteria.
And now they will be, if they'll ask these questions, you know, when was the HVAC installed, all that information.
Never.
There's no HVAC.
Oh, that's right.
There's no ventilation in the school.
They have old school radiators.
Right, for the, for the elementary, would they do half of that Tohonto or would they do it according?
You'll see on the next pages.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yep.
So is that something we could do?
But I have it broken out more.
Is that something I could ask Seth, could I ask one of my selectmen to? Can we coordinate a tour of the building with the FinCom?
Like we do every year.
I think it's great, I do.
I I'm not saying the Boi, I don't wanna have to trouble the Boylston people that have to go over to Berlin, but I'm just saying.
To anyway.
No, just for Boylston.
Yeah, I'd love for them to see the building. We could do a thirty minute tour at B E S and then hop over to Tohonto. And then you guys.
Should invite them tonight. At least them, right?
Yeah.
Mention it.
Tonight.
Berlin.
Oh, can we do, yeah, tonight, well, so yeah.
Just keep telling me.
Alright, so I will reach out.
Cause I think it's, that's how I feel.
I will.
HVAC for A C.
Yes, HVAC is, is for ventilation, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so I'm just wondering, nothing for B at B Berlin. Now I'm confused, cause I really don't get it.
Why, why can't you just open the windows and put on a fan?
Some of the windows don't open in.
Oh, why not?
B E S.
And there's that and also some, and also some kids have, I have, I have one of my, one of my girlfriends teaches kindergarten and some of the kids that have, um. Audio sensory issues, they can't have the fan.
They also might not be able to hear the teacher over the fan, which is why they're install, they're trying to get the lights, what are those things called? Light speeds? Light speeds, so the kids can hear the teacher.
They were approved and they are being, a date's being set finally.
But to be clear.
Electricity back in my day.
The P T O pays for the light speeds, that is not paid for by the district. I know, right?
He's messing with you.
Right, but I didn't get that at first.
No, he's asking the question.
But you're asking questions that you think people will be.
Yeah, right.
The people who are gonna vote are gonna have these questions.
Because now we recognize it, yeah, yeah.
Of course, yeah.
Steve Marrow, the highway, he's already sending me pictures of the.
Of the weather.
The snowstorm coming in.
Oh, God.
Oh, yeah.
Don't worry.
A lot to do this afternoon to prep for that.
And then do you see Friday night into Saturday too?
Nice. Why, why? Spring isn't four weeks.
Hey, look, I just got snowmobile, I'm all for it, let's go.
It's always how March, right? That's right, it's poor winter.
It's always March.
I wanna.
I'll drive the kids down the slide.
At least it's gonna melt quickly.
Yeah, exactly. Be a wet soccer season.
Alright.
Alright, so now we're gonna move into revenue. Oh, sorry.
Going back to the roof, we don't have the roof in here. We understand why, cause we're gonna have the facilities assessment this spring.
Yep.
But Boylston does need a roof, so that has to be on the radar.
So I will tell you this, and we did speak with the FinCom Chair of Boylston. And they are looking to reserve money for a roof and put it aside.
Okay.
Because they're very aware that that needs to be done.
Oh, yeah.
And that was what he said to me.
Great, alright.
That's good news.
That's great.
Yep.
Excellent, thank you.
So there's no HVAC for B M S.
Berlin.
That's an M.
Not in this budget.
Yeah.
Yep.
But I think John had mentioned that the second floor was unbearable.
Yeah.
So this is our revenue. So the first card categories are state aid revenue, which is our chapter seventy just came in. Chapter seventy one, transportation aid and charter reimbursement, so it's about a three hundred and sixty two thousand dollar increase.
So that's good.
Yep. Our district revenue, which is our E and D Medicaid investment and miscellaneous, it's gonna stay level for right now. Our grants and revolvings are going down by a hundred and sixty nine thousand.
That stinks.
We'll dig into these a little deeper in the next page. Part of this is due to the outer funding and part is just taking less funds. And the assessments came out, so I was able to make these, now this is based off of. This budget that's in this presentation. So for Berlin, it's a twenty percent increase. And for Boylston, it's a twenty three percent increase is what they will be assessed for additional.
That's what you're asking for.
Yep.
That's not what they've agreed to.
Oh, yeah, right. That is correct.
Oh, when you said assessments, I thought this was like tax assessments that they were giving from.
This is what the money they would have to pay if this budget was approved. Berlin would have to pay.
Eight point five mil.
Yeah, eight point five million. Boylston would have to pay thirteen point two.
And what it, what number are they, well, or what did they pay last year? This is the actuals from last year?
Yep.
That they paid?
Yep.
So taxes would have to increase, if we got nothing else, taxes would have to increase about twenty three percent in Boylston and twenty percent in Berlin. To make this happen, unless the town can find some more money.
No, no.
That's not taxes increasing. That's the portion of the money going to the schools increasing.
Yes, but if the town says, I don't, I can only give you exactly what I gave you last year.
That, that's a different conversation, but what you're saying, this is not, your, your property taxes are not going up.
No, yeah, 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 no, I get that, I get that.
Yeah.
Hopefully they have some money somewhere.
Depends on.
It depends on what their budget is.
Yes.
Exactly, we gotta get what they can afford without any increase in taxes.
Right, right.
But this is just for.
We have an idea.
For everything or this, this is for above level and level?
Yep, this is for this presentation.
Presentation one, okay.
Yep, yep.
Can we talk about that? I wanna hear about that a little more, about what that would be, mean for them.
What do you mean? I'm sorry.
The increase in taxes. What are they gonna say to us about this?
Oh, yeah.
From their perspective.
When they see this, what does that mean for our, how will our taxes be increased?
We gotta ask them that. I don't know.
Before you do this slide.
That's what I'm curious to know from their side of it.
Yeah, that's what we need to ask. So I'm thinking after speaking with. Do you wanna wait to the end? Should we go?
Keep going.
Okay, so after we had, after when we were at our meeting with Berlin.
Yeah.
Um. They said six, Kristen said six to seven percent was kinda where she felt like she could go.
That's right.
My, I'm not, you know, I don't work for the town and I'm not in the tax assessment or anything like that. But my take on, from what I understood from her was at that point in time. If any, if the max they could give was six to seven percent increase from what they gave last year, anything above that. They would have to look at somehow increasing taxes. Like I said, I'm not one hundred percent positive and we should clarify that tonight, but that was my.
That's what I want, that's.
I was thinking.
I think before this slide is presented, we need the piece of what the towns are able to give. Because I think we as a school committee need to understand the gap.
Well, that's, that's what the conversation is right now.
Yes.
Right. I think it's gonna, from speaking, we got more information from Berlin. But I think it's a six to seven percent at this point in time.
Yeah, cause that's where her two, if she does seven percent, you're right.
Versus twenty.
There's your nine hundred and something thousand, if it's seven percent increase.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. This includes capital. Wait, wait, wait.
The twenty percent includes capital.
Yep, so let me go down a couple more slides.
Oh, you didn't give her the capital.
So just for operating.
Ew.
It's higher. The capital actually brought it down, it's twenty two percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's twenty two percent for Berlin instead of.
So cut fourteen percent, what does that do?
Oh, my God, Mike.
I, I.
That's what you're gonna be asked.
Yes.
Your kid will be in class with like thirty kids.
It's positions.
So whether they. Or whether they're.
No.
Are gifted and need to be challenged, they're not.
So it would be cutting fourteen percent of eight. Is that right?
So it's, go to page twenty four. They were just looking at operating. See the nine hundred and ten thousand? This is where we are right now for Berlin.
Wait, your number on that other slide included capital.
Capital, right.
Okay, this is just operating, okay.
So this is right now, it would be twenty two percent and they're saying six to seven.
This includes.
That's why you said fourteen percent, right?
Did they, were they included capital in there, six to seven percent?
No.
Okay, they weren't included.
Right, they were not.
It's a hundred percent.
They weren't including capital.
You already figured out.
That's where she got the nine hundred, so if, if they give a seven percent increase.
Twenty two percent.
Oh, Nancy did this.
And do that one.
No. Nine, ten times point, point four.
Oh, point one four. Why you say nine, ten?
That's, oh, you're on the wrong page. You're on the wrong, she's just like, go to twenty two, twenty four.
So if she gives a seven percent, they'll give us another four hundred and fifty thousand, which is pretty much what she said. That's what she said at the meeting, four hundred and fifty thousand, right?
Nine, ten, okay.
So then we would be at.
Oh, wasn't, okay.
So we have to cut four hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay, that's what.
Eight, that's just for Berlin, four hundred and fifty thousand, right? Is that what you just said? Have to cut.
No. Who cares, cut, cut.
We're at a loss, right?
How many teachers is that?
How much is that just for Berlin? Would you say it's just for Berlin?
That's just for Berlin, four, you'd have to cut four hundred and fifty thousand to do the increase. This is four hundred and fifty thousand.
Where, where?
So a teacher is like.
Seven, eight teachers.
Teacher's eighty thousand goes in four fifty.
Kids in the one class and that's half of it.
Eighty.
You know, you got forty, you know, you got forty.
Teachers you'd have to cut.
Forty kids in a class, it's alright, they can handle it.
So in Berlin, they'll give you one teacher.
Knock the walls down between the rooms, you're good.
This is what we keep saying to them, where are we gonna go with this? Where can we possibly go without?
We're gonna go to a town vote and we're gonna try to get this money through the taxes.
Increase, what was that?
Two, two point.
They did seven last year, so she's saying we can do.
Same this year.
Same, no, no, no increase.
Six to seven, yeah.
She said seven percent.
Is that Boylston same thing, same? They went down.
Yeah.
Six.
What?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Didn't they do a lot more buildings in the Berlin?
Disappointed. Where's the revenue from FedEx? That is what I want to know. And Rand Whitney and all those other huge factories that made my house shake for a solid year.
It's clearly into the microphone.
It's just not even possible despite the special ad increases, it's just.
Well, it's, Julie, it's gonna go to vote, it's happening, it is happening all around, it is gonna go to vote. It's gonna end up being what the people want, because if the, if there's a gap this big and we only, we can, we can get the gap down hopefully like this. Between what the town can give and what the school needs. And then there's gonna be this gap, it's gonna be up to the people. That's, that's gonna be what it has to be.
And the school did, did, did come back and do a different budget, so you guys did rework the original.
We've already cut things from our original.
Lot out of there, yeah, whole page, yep, whole page.
Things that we still are gonna need at some point in time.
Right.
We went from twenty six percent to fifteen percent.
Right. Yeah, so that's great. So it's not like you're not.
Right.
Working, right, right. I mean, I, I don't, I mean.
So Boylston is only gonna give you a six percent increase, so we're even in worse shape in Boylston then.
Wow.
How much is that cut? How much is that?
Five hundred, so they're gonna give you an extra five hundred and eighty thousand, hold on, nine, six, seven.
Last year they gave us eleven.
So ten, and we need eleven.
Boylston did?
Three, four.
And now they want six?
So we'll be, in Boylston, we'll be a million, one million eighty four thousand, eighty four. One point eight million, not one point eight, one point oh eight million.
And they gave eleven percent last year.
Shy, so how many teachers is one million? Oh, my God.
Thirteen, fourteen.
They gave ten percent.
We won't have teachers at the school.
Elementary and two percent.
Teach yourself.
Chat G P T?
It'll be just a giant daycare.
Chat G P T will teach the kids.
How mu, what was the percentage for, uh, Berlin of the seven?
Seven.
Ah, cheaper.
Like, what, what did they give to?
Actually.
Seven percent. So wait, what, Boylston gave eleven percent last year?
Yep.
So why?
Ten percent to B E S, two percent to Tohonto.
So why are they trying to not give that much this year?
I don't know. We didn't, we didn't say other than.
Is this a question?
Let me tell you, that's a sin.
Is this a question that an angry resident can take up with the Select Board?
Probably.
Um, they're not even giving the same percent.
That's, that's what I'm saying, Julie, is it, can I take this?
So I will tell you that I received a phone call this morning that said to me. We wanna maintain a good relationship with the school committee and, and the schools. And we're hoping that we can work this out together.
Okay.
Otherwise it's gonna create.
That's six percent.
Really.
So they're saying six percent is that, that's their olive branch?
I don't think, I think they will work with us.
They'll do more.
I have a feeling, but not as much of doing more.
So right now we need another million dollars, so, yeah, so.
Our feeling that this will not be good in the long run if we are extremely aggressive with this. In the ways that you're talking about.
Well.
Megan, hold on, chill out. It's. It's a million dollars, okay? So what do you wanna cut? Let's go through it. What do you wanna cut? What's the, what's the FinCom wanna cut?
They're gonna say that's not, that's not our decision, that's your decision.
Well, our decision is we need it.
Decision.
We need it.
And, and, I'm sorry, this is a million, not including capital.
My problem is.
So we need another three mil for capital total for the district.
I feel good about capital, most of it.
Because the town, they're, oh, so they're gonna cover the capitals.
Not all, but a good chunk of it.
But I feel pretty good about it.
Okay.
I, I, I.
And I hope I'm right.
I worry that we will lose that opportunity in the capital.
If we don't get too aggressive here, if we don't.
Okay.
Well, what's, alright, so what's, what's aggressive?
Moving piece.
Aggressive is helping special needs kids, it's helping.
Yeah, they're trying to avoid.
Of course. But how do you do that? With what you need, with inflation? And we don't, we don't control the cost of electricity and gas and oil, we don't.
No, these are things.
That's what I was trying to say at the beginning.
Right.
So much of this spending that we have no control of.
Over.
You know? This is exactly, this is why we, this is why we couldn't vote. Because we had to have this really difficult conversation because we couldn't possibly go in tomorrow. There's two more slides I want to go over.
Right, right, right.
And difficult conversation. I don't know, we don't know what to do at this point that could possibly now decimating. I don't know.
I would love to understand, there's still, and again, this is a probably a FinCom question, there's still multiple buildings, huge factories being built up in Boylston behind where the FedEx is. You can't tell me that those don't bring in at least, you know, five hundred thousand in taxes. I don't know, what's the tax rate? Those properties have to be worth, you know, fifteen, twenty million, they're massive warehouses. You can't tell me that their revenue or the tax revenue from some of, what what are we doing with that money? In Boylston? And why can't some of that be put toward? Do you know what I'm saying, Julie?
That's this page, it wasn't completed until I went and printed it. So I gotta fill it in. It doesn't seem like, I don't know if we're getting, or did they tell that they're getting that money, I don't know.
Maybe not yet. I thought there was like an abatement or something, or you know what I'm saying? So maybe that's something. And if we know, okay, we gotta move this off a year or whatever, maybe we can get a don- a generous donation from one of these, you know, I know.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yes.
Sound negative, I'm just.
No, I know.
Can we look at school choice?
Yeah.
So page nineteen. So for school choice, it, you can see it's forecasted out for each school. So we'll start with um Berlin.
Berlin.
So for this year, for fiscal year twenty-four, I'm allocating a hundred and seventy-six thousand to the budget. Much more than we have in the prior years, as you can see, but last year it was a hundred and eight, and the year before it was sixty-five. So we're trying to increase our revenue as much as we can to help the towns out.
For school choice?
For school choice. Boylston, we we don't have, we have a hundred thousand left, so I'm just spreading it out amongst remaining years. I mean, I could increase fifty thousand, but that's honestly, doesn't, it doesn't even make a difference. Eventually, we're gonna be out of funds at Boylston. And then Tohonto, you know, you can see I increased that too, and I increased it to seven hundred thousand. Prior year was five eighty-six, and before that was two ninety-three. So we're definitely, I feel that we're doing our part with our revolving accounts to try to substantiate as much additional revenue as we can.
That's the only thing for revolving is school choice funds.
And if you go to the next page on twenty, you'll see. These are the grants in this circuit breaker. So I increased preschool revolving because you proved that preschool teacher, at B M S, so that's been added in. And I, it's little bit, but I increased after school revolving for five thousand from B M S and ten thousand from B E S for electricity to apply, be applied towards that. Can you see this title one grant? I just want to double check on this. I think this is title four, but I don't know, it's ten thousand total. Yep. But it's titled, was titled one? Oh, that one's set. Yep. That's that's anticipated funding based on twenty-three. Yeah, I kept them all, all the entitlement grants the same. It's tutors, E L A tutor and the math tutor. Five, ten thousand, five thousand for each school. And how about Tohonto, that's another tutor? None of the money in it, so it's in the budget. There wasn't enough money in the grant, so I just took five for for each. Oh, for. And kept it at ten thousand. For this year or next year? Next year. I don't, I don't, I can look up this year, so I'm not sure how it was applied. Okay. Okay. I can look that up and let you know. Yeah, so those are the additional, additional slides.
So we're just really not getting a ton of, from school choice for um in Boylston?
No. I don't think they recommended any school choice this year.
The classes are huge.
You just said you're recommending, they're recommending more for next year.
For Tohonto.
For Tohonto. They can't for Boylston because the classes, they don't.
Tohonto.
Well, increases your class sizes, that that's the problem with having school choice in elementary schools. If you don't have the room, especially in Boylston, increases your class size.
Yeah, but we just, you just talked about cutting assistant principals, cutting athletic director, cutting math teacher from Tohonto. But now you're gonna increase.
Cutting the math teacher, not adding.
Not adding one, so, but you're talking about adding to the population. Adding to the student population without adding staff or teachers. You talked about a miserable experience in middle school at Tohonto. You're gonna add kids into that miserable experience without adding the staff to support them and turn that around and improve that.
But you're losing enrollment.
Yeah.
Makes up for the enrollment. And at the end of the day, it helps your budget.
But does it help the taxpayers? How much are we spending per student at Tohonto? Eighteen thousand, nineteen thousand, twenty thousand, somewhere in that ballpark.
School choice is just such a valuable way to fund your budget.
I get it from that perspective, Nancy, but from the other perspective, what are you taking away from resident kids versus what are you getting? What are you getting into your, what are you getting into your budget? How much does a school choice bring in for revenue per kid?
Five thousand.
Five thousand, okay.
Could be more depends, if they're a special ed kid, but generally five thousand.
Well, we're talking about kicking special, not kicking special ed out, but out of district placement for special ed. But now we want to bring them, so if we can bring those, if we can bring school choice special education in, why can't we handle our own special education? That's, I didn't even know that was an option, alright, number one. Number two, okay, we're spending eighteen thousand. Taxpayers are spending eighteen thousand per student from Berlin and Boylston. Now you want to bring in other towns' students who, for whatever reason, choose to come to our school. We're gonna get five grand and the taxpayers from our towns are gonna kick in the other thirteen grand?
Yeah, why?
So, that's the way.
Let me tell you, I I get what you're saying. So for fiscal year twenty-three, for special ed tuition, we have received four hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars.
From school choice?
From school choice. No, just school choice, school choice.
Alright. That's a lot of kids at five grand a kid.
That is.
Did you say four fifty K or four forty K?
That's just Tohonto or that's the whole district?
Seventy-five. That's the whole district. No, that's seventy-one, two, seventy-five kids.
Okay.
That's three hundred and seventy-five thousand. So, oh, because if they're special ed, they get more?
More, yep.
So in general, how much do we spend per kid?
I don't have that.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
Not in the high school, not necessarily in the high school.
Million or whatever.
Because you have so many more classes, that's where it usually levels out. You know, because you have so many more classes and you have the empty desk. So you're not, you're not hiring a new teacher for these kids.
Yeah.
You're not, it's one more book, it's, you know what I mean?
None, there's no more books anymore.
Right, those expenses aren't there because it's few and far between and you're losing the kids. So it's just one extra body.
We're losing the kids, are we losing the taxpayer revenue?
Ninth grade.
We're losing the kid, but are we losing the taxpayer revenue if a kid goes to a private school? If he goes to Assabett, maybe we are, right?
It's how you look at it. Building a budget, I think it's amazing. I get what you're saying.
It is amazing. I wish the state would step up the five grand when we're spending twenty.
Right.
Well, I think the other thing about a per people expenditure is they should have two per people expenditure calculations. One should be, so, because that's probably taking all the fixed and variable costs into consideration, correct?
Yep.
When they're doing that calculation, and I haven't looked into it, but, so maybe what they should do is, you know, what is like, it's just like tax rates, your effective tax rate and your marginal tax rate, what would be the marginal cost of adding a student? Because it's gonna be different based upon the situation, to Nancy's point, if there's extra space in certain situations or certain classes, and we're like, oh, we can put a kid in here, like, for example, M J's class, you know, if, when they had three teachers in first grade, there was only fourteen kids in the class. That teacher is still getting paid the same amount. If they could get five kids to fill that, that's free money for us with what's the spending, to your point, it's a cost of a book. And you know, yes, they're gonna use a marginal amount of the bathroom and the food and whatever, like the wear and hair on the building. So, I don't know, like, there must be a way to figure out a calculation like that. That would take a ton of time.
I would have to look into it.
It would be like a huge analysis. You need like a financial analyst under you or something.
Take in your school choice students, because you want to make sure, that's the case you're taking them into. You're taking them into where it's not gonna.
Yes, which is why.
So you're taking kids in, but not taking away from, let's say, a Boylston kid needs extra help. But now you've got a, I don't know, Sterling kid, taking away the time that that Boylston kid can get the extra help. That Sterling kid is being paid for by the Boylston parents and the Boylston kid's not getting the attention.
I I agree.
Yeah, but you would have the same thing though, even if you had twenty Boylston kids. If you had twenty Boylston kids.
They're all, yeah, they're all paying for it, so.
Oh, so you're saying because they're all paying residents, which is fine?
It's because we're only getting five thousand.
It's a small, small number.
And it's costing.
I mean, you want to double that, or the state wants to double or triple that, then fine, and make it one to one, fine.
I mean, I can tell you for.
I know, they're not gonna do that, but.
No, no.
I mean, is school choice, like, I I know a lot of towns don't do it anymore, right? Like, you can't school choice in a Shrewsbury, can you school choice in a Westboro or Hopkinton? Probably not. So like, some of the bigger towns.
Most schools limited to nine, eighth, ninth grade.
Right, so they wouldn't do it in elementary. We always did it, because I think, remember last year, they ace pushed for it, because then it would be more money that he would. Yeah, in Boylston, um where he saw gaps. So I do think, to your point, if you find a gap, like, again, that one specific situation, in first grade, they had three teachers and they only had forty kids. So there was gaps right there. I think he took school choice for that grade last year. Um, same thing with that fifth grade, at one point in time, they had three teachers for that grade.
Here's another way to look at it, because I always gotta go the financial route, right? If you, we go, we fast forward to fiscal year twenty-eight, right? So right now, you're, we're receiving three hundred and ninety-one thousand. If we do not take any more school choice kids, we'll be at one hundred and seventy-nine thousand receiving. I'm just like, we're already in such a hard.
Right.
Can you imagine?
You're saying we don't take anymore.
Seven hundred thousand.
And we just let these kids go through.
Seven hundred thousand.
So what, so what grade are these kids gonna go into? What class?
The, for next year?
Yeah.
So I think.
And is your enrollment history page, does that already include them?
Yes. My enrollment history page includes them. Bear with me for one sec.
Yeah, I wish it was more too. I I think it should be ten thousand.
I I agree with you.
State mandated?
So I can tell you for Tohonto.
Or it should be like average.
It's, right now, it was recommended, is this okay if I'm talking about this?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm trying to find the elementary one.
Okay, good. Five in seventh grade, ten in ninth grade, five in tenth grade, and five in eleventh.
Yeah, they usually present this with the budget.
Twenty-five total, right.
Yeah, we did this last year, I remember, they explained it. And yeah, for the elementary, yeah.
Yeah.
And the principal would come up with that, where they feel that they have gaps. So yeah, let me hear what they say for the elementary. I'd love to find the elementary.
That's what I'm trying to find.
Yeah. Because B E S, I don't, with the teachers the way they are, I don't.
Because when they come in elementary, then they're here.
I know Boylston said no.
Boylston said no. So Berlin.
I think John said no too.
They can't, because those buildings are already overcrowded.
They're already overcrowded. The only thing is if you only really got only eighteen kindergartners, they could take some in the kindergarten, but to your point, they're gonna go all the way up.
Right.
Okay, so seventh grade, you're putting a couple in.
So in Tohonto, it might make sense.
Oh, it definitely does.
Because you need kids, especially in the ninth and tenth grade. Because you're losing a bunch, a bunch.
I'd be careful voting on additional school choice at Tohonto until I know why the class is losing kids. Are they losing them for something that we can make up for in the future? Or are they losing them to something we can't?
Compete with Assabett too great, and that's.
No.
Where they, are they all?
Thirteen kids with us.
Only Berlin kids.
You're competing with tech schools, you're compete, competing with a math and science school, you're competing.
We're trying to hire a math teacher, we're trying to get more.
Not math and science.
We're trying to, I just heard you list a whole bunch of stuff.
There's always gonna be.
Right here, Nancy, on Tohonto, I heard you list nine hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, it's already been cut.
Yep.
Half of that was math and science stuff.
Oh, add that back in, then you don't need school choice kids. I mean, that, right?
Then you're not, well, no, you're not gonna, you're not gonna lose your resident kids.
Yeah. Saint John, right. And uh, B E S said none as well. Yeah.
No, yeah, we can't put anyone, any kids at B E S. Those classes are average twenty, no aides.
I do think things like, we're looking at the internship at Tohonto, I think that is gonna make us more attractive. I think slowly we're getting there.
Yeah, slowly, yeah, leadership, leadership matters.
Right.
So we're having the right people in the right place is the first step in turning around the climate, the the whole organization.
Hundred percent.
And and that's what we're trying to do first, and then, you know, but yes, you gotta find the right people that are willing to take the money.
My daughter goes to a tech school, right? And I walk in that tech school, I'm telling you, I see thirteen three D maker, three D printers.
So for that, for that tech school, okay, so for that tech school, is it a private school?
No.
Are you paying, so?
It's like Assabett.
So who's paying the tuition?
It's Assabett.
So, if you were in Berlin and someone went to Assabett.
Yeah.
Berlin is now paying for that kid to go to Assabett.
Yep.
Plus Berlin is paying for the kid that you've replaced them with.
This would help them, is that what you're saying?
So they're paying, are they paying the full eighteen or whatever the numbers, I don't know what the numbers, let's just, for conversation, let's say it costs eighteen to go there, or it costs eighteen to go here. Berlin's now paying eighteen to send a kid there. We're gonna replace that body with a school choice student and get five. Berlin's still gonna pay thirteen. So now Berlin's paying, where's that thirty-one, for that one student?
The system's broken.
Yeah, it is, so.
That's, oh my god, how many times have I said that about so many different things lately?
That's a huge problem for us, because we we can't just give up that eighteen, we still need it for the budget.
We need it, yeah.
Unfortunately, we can't, we, there's nothing.
So Berlin's hit twice for the one kid.
But the system, there's nothing we can do about that.
No, I know.
We cannot take school choice.
No, the point is, Megan, we can do something about it. We can't do it for a hundred percent of the kids who choose to leave, but if we got a quarter of those kids to stay, what would that do to our budget?
Kids staying, rather than.
Than going somewhere to, you know, if they're going for.
If they go to private school, they'll pay, right? So you're just talking about Assabett alone?
Assabett.
Amso.
Oh, Amso, we still pay? You're kidding?
Oh, we pay for Amso?
I mean.
Blessing.
We can't put an electric shop or a plumbing shop in our school. We can certainly put a math and science.
I'm thinking of more with Amso, not something that's us paying, but us losing kids.
Right.
Competition of why we're losing, right, yeah.
Right.
Assabett, the town's paying.
Yep.
The town pays for Assabett, Manitman, and Norfolk.
Okay, the votes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot of kids, right? Eleven, eleven kids last year leave to Assabett, or thirteen, I don't know.
But that's always, that's, it was like that when I was in high school though, because there are people that they don't want to go on the path to college. They want to learn a trade, they want to become an electrician or a plumber, and you cannot learn that.
Those hopes are college ready.
And it's a great thing that we have that.
Right kid.
Yes, it's just the system needs to account for it better, so that the, the public schools, for the kids that are taking the path to go to college or to what, do whatever they're doing in the public school.
So I just want to make sure everybody understands why, you know, a Boylston taxpayer is paying fifteen thousand dollars for a student from some other town, and we're not getting.
Right.
Reimbursed for it. I just want to make sure people understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's a, I.
Makes sense, Mike.
It is frustrating.
Yeah.
But what, there is nothing anyone in this room can do about it.
Oh, yeah, well, a hundred percent anyway.
Or anyone in the town.
Oh, the town could vote to include some.
Give us more money, then we could have more.
Town can give us more money.
Exactly.
Entertaining for kids not to leave.
Right.
Because that's the whole part, that's the whole point of this improvement plan is to improve.
Yep, the town can give us more money.
Make it more enticing, improve it, keep people here, build a community.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Alright.
It's all full circle, isn't it? And that's our lens, because that's our lens. It's not. Right. I don't think it's not that they don't have that lens, but it's not their priority, it's not their.
No.
It's our job to demonstrate that now, market that and promote that.
Been trying to do and get out there and talk, you know, to these different groups, we have more places we're going to, but.
Right, their lens is the more than half population in Boylston that's elderly, that might be living on fixed incomes, that doesn't have children in the schools, right?
That's who they're, that's who.
So I I get the point of view, but at the same point in time, you know, like to your point, we we are a community, and if we don't all start acting that way, everybody has to give a little bit more, then things are just gonna crumble.
If you don't teach these kids financial literacy, they're not gonna graduate knowing anything about money, you're gonna have harder conversations like this in the future when they're in position to be voting and running this town, they're not gonna understand it, then those elderly are gonna be out of luck, because they're not gonna have people who know what they're doing to.
Right.
Help out with their housing and services and everything else, because they're not gonna understand it. Twenty-five-year-old couple, this past week, didn't know how to get a bank check to pay a fricking rent deposit. Didn't know how to get a bank check.
It's just the simplest, yeah.
Oh, trust me, I see what I see on the tax returns.
That's what we.
Did you have to teach them how to do get the bank? Did we talk about that last time you were here?
No.
It's very popular, but my daughter loves her Stanley.
Oh, really?
We name it Stanley.
Oh.
Were you done with the presentation?
You did a great presentation.
It was good, Nancy, uh, yeah.
So do you guys want to keep it?
Yep.
As is?
Anything you want to try.
Oh, no, I don't even want to keep this, I'm like, yep, I want to keep this. Assistant principal back in, put the chief school back in, no, just kidding. That's what I wanted.
I mean, it sounds like, it sounds like it's gonna end up being less than this anyway, so might as well keep it.
Yeah, it's gonna be less than this, it looks like.
Yeah, so I think, I don't even know. I am still thinking.
I don't know what you could cut from this, to be honest, I, that's.
Because we've been, that's exactly.
So it's gonna end up being an override.
From this.
All this, we've been honest, given this weekend, we're like, what can we possibly cut? So you think about. We don't need, it's like, we looked at everything, we looked at some positions, we might be able to rearrange, but we can't talk about that right now. Public, but we have some ideas, but. Nothing that's gonna be drastic. No, nothing drastic. I mean.
So yeah, I mean, I think the big thing is that, yeah, there's, this is a good solid budget. There's a few things missing, I'm hoping that we'll be able to get them in next year, but if it gets to a point where we have to do, and I think that was the point Adam tried to make a year ago, if we do, if it does get to a point where taxpayers have to vote and taxes have to be increased, why not just have it all in there at once? Because people aren't gonna vote two years in a row for their taxes to increase. So that's the thing about the assistant principal and the teacher, that we might, you know, we're thinking about two, three years down the road, well, it's a couple of teachers we need in a year. What happens if we do have to go to vote and, you know, and it does pass, well, or as hell, they're not gonna want to vote a second year in a row, oh, we need a teacher, and we need this, and we need that, and, oh, costs are still going up? We're not gonna be able to do two votes in a row. So I guess that's my only thing about leaving stuff out. If if this is really looking like, yes, this is gonna go to a vote, what's the cost of assistant principal and two teachers spread across a tax base?
I think, I think in a better climate, when we didn't have such a high increase in special education costs, we would have had a better chance to do this.
Yes.
That's unfortunate.
Of course.
I mean, that's the, that's the issue.
Yeah.
That's, it's extraordinary, the amount that we're paying, other districts are paying, you're hearing that all over.
Yes, it's all over, there's Facebook posts, people are, and it's people are out there, they're campaigning.
Yeah, M A C's got a lot of conversation going on about that, yeah.
Because they don't have choice.
What are the towns, year over year, given, is it, is it generally in that seven percent? They, that's, that's six to seven percent.
But if inflation is higher than usual.
Right, right.
I would say.
That's what doesn't, I mean, even, take the special ed piece, totally, there, there, there's the electorate that's, there's, there's just inflation everywhere. So how, how, how can the department say, well, you have to go back to the drawing board, when, like you said, these, these are increases that you don't have any control over?
That's how the town's cut. That's how some districts cut people. That's what they end up doing. And we cut, Boylston cut several years ago significantly in the special education department. We've been just trying to replenish that, to get back to the baseline again the past couple of years, because so many people were cut, paraprofessionals, special educators. And then we haven't done it historically. Less so in Berlin, less so in Tohoto, but Boylston particularly.
I wonder why?
I think you've had a school choice applied to Boylston too, and that's made it...
Well, the building's older, so there's less space. I mean, even in the classroom right now, twenty kids in my son's classroom, the teacher's like, I, she has them all at tables, but it's just not working. Like, she has to get desks in, and then the classroom, you can't even walk with desks in the room.
Yeah.
But she's like, they're, I can't, the behavior is awful with them all at tables.
Right, yeah, that is...
So she has to switch it up. So I mean, uh, you know, again, you're in situations like that. It's an older building, the classrooms aren't that big. They're, oh, you, you saw the building, it's crowded with stuff. I wish I could go in. I'm a huge organi, you know what I mean? If we got some of that, then we'd have more space. But to Mike's point, there's the building, we're outgrowing some of these buildings.
Right.
So I just...
And Berlin's like that too. The school is, the, the building is open, but the classrooms are small.
They're smaller, right.
They wasn't built for that many children.
No, not enough cubbies, no.
Eighteen, John told us?
Yeah.
It's a small, yeah.
Certainly couldn't add other, more teachers on.
There's no other rooms to...
There's no rooms.
There's no more rooms, yeah.
Two rooms per class, eighteen kids per room. That was the plan. And you had probably what, twelve or thirteen kids at the time per room?
Probably.
Now you're at twenty-one?
Yeah.
They didn't anticipate the growth to be so quick.
I don't know why, because they approved the building.
Can they add on to that building? I mean, it's still a beautiful build. Can I wonder if they add on?
It was, yeah.
They're gonna have to at some point.
Yeah, let's talk about that tonight too.
No, let's not bring that up. That's, that's, that's for when, um, Megan's off the school committee. My kids are out at the, well, it's probably gonna be...
It's all about you, honestly. I'm here for the kids.
I'm fighting for this battle, this ba, let's get this battle going. This is just crazy. Oh, my god, all right.
Is someone calling or is there something else on the agenda?
Well, we had one other thing, Nancy, do you want to talk about substitute teacher pay after all this, or is this...
Sure, yes. So, um, this should be a brief...
My cousin in New York gets a hundred fifty dollars a day, he chooses a certified teacher. I'm like, what?
Wow.
So as you know, we're having trouble, we have trouble finding substitutes. I did benchmarking, and we currently are at ninety-five dollars for substitutes. And we would like to recommend to the committee to go to a hundred dollars.
Can I ask you something along those lines though?
Yeah.
Is there, is it possible to vary those, those amounts, so that you get a certified teacher?
Yeah, some schools do do that. Some, some do it for a retired teacher, certified, and, yeah.
They've been asking, there have been teachers who have asked, retired teachers, at least at Berlin, who have asked about that for years.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
So if you're retired, you get the hundred, and if you're not...
If you're retired, you get a hundred and...
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
Ten, twenty-five, yeah.
So if we're saying a hundred, probably, well, it depends. So we're at ninety-five. So we're at ninety-five, and then we could do, if you're certified, retired or not, and then non. So we could do like a hundred and a hundred and ten? What do you guys think?
Well, you said you did some benchmarking, so what are, what are the benchmarks?
Yeah, that's what I was doing.
Most of the ones I saw were, there were those different tiers.
I didn't bring it, but I, she presented, yes, she did. We were the lowest.
Yeah, we weren't good.
Did I do it at the last meeting?
Yeah, I think Shrewsbury, uh, we did like the surrounding towns, Clinton. It was on one of those, wasn't that the last meeting? It was like a couple...
I think it was a while ago.
It was a while ago. It was like when Adam was still here, was it?
Yeah, I think it was when Adam was still here.
It was like a while ago. It was like in the fall, I think. It was in the fall. It was on one of those spreadsheets you did.
Yeah, with all the, uh...
Yeah, it was like on one of those, where you like had called all the other towns. But it was like... Clinton and Marlborough and all that.
Oh, here it is, okay. No, that's not it. That's paraprofessionals, substitutes.
That's why it was on that one, yeah.
So, right, here it is. Wes Boylston's one-ten a day, North Burl, South Burl's one-ten a day, Shrewsbury's one-forty, Hudson's a hundred, Clinton's a hundred, Marlborough's one-ten, Meschoba's a hundred. We are ninety-five.
Yeah, we should definitely go, are there any of those, um, certified or retired teacher? Or is it just a flat rate there for those?
Marlborough with, with certified, a hundred and twenty.
Uh, yeah.
And they have the long-term rates too.
Yeah.
And what is the one four, if you're not certified, what do we get?
One-ten.
Just as a retired, wait.
How about a hundred and ten?
How about a hundred twenty and a hundred? Yeah.
We could do a hundred and twenty and a hundred. My only question is, we just talked about how we have no money. Are we able to do? But this is just, what, marginal, it's not...
So you would pay certified teacher one-twenty and a certified, and a retired teacher one-twenty?
And then you'd pay just somebody who's not certified, maybe who comes in and fills his apparel?
Yep.
What's the matter, you're, I think it's what?
Do you have the money for it?
I'm nervous with the one-twenty without increasing my budget bucket for next year. How about one-ten and a hundred? One-fifteen? It's like, let's make a deal. What is our majority of substitutes? Are they retired?
Good question.
I don't know.
Berlin historically is. Boylston, I think, uh, no, I think they're not necessarily parents, when she said retired.
A lot of parents. Well, parents lately have stepped in.
Yeah.
Um, we have like one or two retired, but I think they do it...
Tohoto, you get a lot of retired teachers who are from Tohoto.
Get any. But again, we talked about this too, same as the paras. I think sometimes with that, it's about, um, well, we've got, yeah, we've got a couple retired that are great, but I think it's about wanting to be in the building. So it's about that atmosphere, that vibe, that, you know, um, of wanting to be there. So I think if we have the right leader in place, that will create that environment, um, so. And the parents, you know, I think parents, they're not doing it for the money. They're doing it to help out the kids' school, and they love to see the kids, love having mom and dad at school and elementary school and...
But does that help them learn?
Oh, I would never sub my kids' class.
You'd never sub in your kids?
No, no, I wouldn't. It would be dire. Well, not long-term, like if they need someone, if like someone's sick, I'm sure I'll fill in for the day, but my son would... Maddie, maybe.
I mean, af, after twenty days, their rate goes up.
Two-five.
Yeah.
After twenty consecutive, yeah.
Yeah, after twenty days, the rate goes to BA zero.
I thought we changed that though.
That's like a maternity leave.
What's that mean, BA zero? That's the lowest level of the te, that's like an entry-level teacher, it's step zero. It's like somebody that just has their BA, well, we learned this from contract negotiations.
No, but how, why would that be a sub?
Yeah.
If it's a long-term sub, they get, it's the hourly rate of a BA zero. So they would take that salary, break down to a, not hourly, I'm sorry. They would take that salary, break down to a daily rate, and they would pay that.
They end up...
Got it. Or weekly or whatever. They get that rate of their break.
What, what's a competitive rate that's gonna get good people in here that aren't gonna cause problems in the school? They're gonna continue the learning and not cause a disruption, whatever, all that?
I think being on par with the surrounding towns.
Okay, a hundred bucks?
I think a hundred and a hundred and fifteen is fine.
I think a hundred and twenty's good for retired.
She just says she doesn't think she can swing that.
One-on-one, one-on-one, ten, one-fifteen, is that what it is?
You're gonna pay a retired teacher ten more dollars than a, someone that has no educational experience? I would pay the retired teacher.
One-hundred and one-twenty, we'll be fine.
Yeah, I would pay them twenty dollars more.
It's not like everyone's gonna be one-twenty.
Exactly, it'll, they'll...
I don't think people are subbing for the money, because when you take the taxes out at the end of the day...
So now I have another one to work on.
Well, if they're not subbing for the money, then why would we need to change it at all?
I'll sub in food service after tax season. I'm just busy for this month. I'll do Tuesdays after tax season. I'll do April, May, and June.
Oh, man, really?
We'll do April, May, and June.
But should we increase the rate for there also?
Yeah, I think, yes.
Didn't we already vote on that last time?
Didn't we just do something with food service?
We gave them the general...
What do they get a day, the subs?
Ninety-five.
They're getting ninety-five too?
That's for...
Let me just increase it to a hundred.
But that shift is only seven hours, so...
Are you there seven hours?
Well, I wasn't there when they said that. They don't really, do they really need someone for seven hours on a Tuesday?
Lunch is over by like...
Seven, I think she said.
Ten fifty-six?
Couple hours.
Is it six and a half?
I think she said the, yeah.
It's not magic, Julie, you don't just show up and say...
I get that. I worked in restaurants, but I think it's very different there. That's very different there.
I'll sub Tohoto, you don't have to pay me, all right? I'll do it every Tuesday. I can't do it in March.
That doesn't solve the warranty control.
No, it's not. It's gonna get us through the end of the year.
Oh, maybe Wendy will know how much we pay us.
But, aren't we trying to hire someone for that role? We're waiting for someone to come back from...
Probably not, yeah, trying.
I mean, hopefully, we'll ha, have someone for the next school year.
What do you do, the register? Have a great day, enjoy your carrots. You have allergies.
See, we call it Stanley. See, she found Stanley.
Oh, yeah, that's... It's been in my bag the whole time, mom. Of course it has, but that's where waddle bottles exist, in your bag. They live there.
All right, so you want a hundred and twenty?
Why don't we, oh, she just wrote it, so Wendy should be replying. Sorry, guys.
It's okay.
Ninety-five a day for food service sub, is what we pay right now. It is ninety-five a day. For six-point-five hours.
Oh, it is six-point-five.
Wow, all right.
And that's what the teachers, yeah, that's the same.
That's less than minimum wage.
No, it's not.
Fourteen sixty-one an hour, minimum wage is fifteen bucks an hour, isn't it?